Hey, are you ready?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hopefully.
Outside.
Yeah, that's what we need, we need the rain.
No, I think it's, I think it's.
So this shirt, this is not a shirt I would typically buy. It's really cold, like it's really soft. Here's the problem. So the material was made out of some type of stretchy whatever. And so whenever I move and do certain things, certain buttons just disconnect. So all day I've been having random mouth, uh.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled work session of our Silver Consolidated Board of Education. It is June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and we are starting at five thirty-three. We're gonna try something a little bit different that Patrick saw on some other board meetings, and he is going to do our roll call.
President Ashley Montenegro.
Here.
Dr. Michelle Diaz. Patrick Kahn, here. Mr. Mike McMillan.
Here.
And Mr. Eddie Flores.
Here.
Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is consideration and approval of the work session agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Kahn, do I have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. First item on our agenda is Mrs. Cindy Beras, Associate Superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Madam President, Board members, Superintendent Hawkins, esteemed colleagues and guests who are floating out there with us. I would first like to apologize, I did send you quite a bit of reading. And so I, I apologize for that, it wa- it was extensive, some of the reports I sent you. But what I'll do is I'll give you a brief update on some of those things. So I sent you two, two things that combined was your CTE and Next Gen application, that's what we'll be talking about today, as well as the Fine Arts Grant. So that's, that's what I'm gonna go, go ahead and go over today. When you take a look at first, just our CTE and our Next Gen, this is the amount of funding we, we received. For CTE, we received thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars. If you remember, last year we were in a consortium for the last two years. And so for our CTE, and that's our Perkins money, that went to the consortium. This year, we are no longer part of that consortium, those are our funds that we can use. So that was to the tune of thirty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-five. Then we have our Next Gen, that's the state funding. So you have your Carl Perkins, your CTE funding, that is provided through the federal government, and then your Next Gen is, is state. And so for that, we received thirty-one thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. After meeting with multiple, um, meeting, actually, meeting with multiple members of the CTE staff, we had a couple of meetings throughout the year, it was decided that we would like to ensure that all of our programs receive funding. And so we were able to do that, so everybody gets a certain amount of funding for supplies to get through their year. Some programs, if the program, um, if the cost of their program for their software or their curriculum is a yearly cost, they'll receive a little bit less in material spending. But what we have is anywhere from a thousand to twenty-five hundred per program. And that's a little bit different, some of our programs hadn't been able to, because we didn't have access to the Perkins money, weren't able to see those pieces for materials. So I know they're pretty excited. Um, as a team, they also decided that we would hold back a certain amount of money, which was five thousand dollars, and every year, somebody new, some program new would get that money. And remember, this is just for established programs. If there's a program new, that doesn't come out of this funding. There's a small, um, small part of the budget that we could potentially use, but these are just the established programs we already have to solidify that. So this year, it was five thousand dollars, and so the program that gets the five thousand dollars is, is the CLIF, when we were drawing out of a hat, CLIF got the, um, for their Pro Start and the culinary, they got an extra five thousand. So if you tack that on top of the twenty-five hundred, that's how our programs are going to maintain large pieces of equipment. They're going to be able, be able to refurbish, things like that, just so we can keep that momentum going. But I, I talked to some of the teachers, and some of them were very, very excited. We had a, a, I don't wanna say a fight, a disagreement with the state on what materials were, because there's always, especially for state and federal funding, you can't purchase food. So we had a conversation in regards to, well, Pro Start, it's not purchasing food, it's purchasing their materials, their classroom materials. And so I asked them to look at, you know, the, the staples and the food in regards to the way we would look at the metal for welding. You wouldn't question if I bought metal for welding, why are you questioning if I buy beef for Pro Start? So they, they leaned in, and they were, they were very good with that. So now, Mrs. Flores and Mrs. Hepford can buy the food that they need with those, those monies. So that's for our Next Gen and CTE. Our Fine Arts, we actually don't have an amount. They did that really, um, different this year. And so you'll see it when I, when you look through, if you were able to already look through, or when you look through the paperwork. They did a Google form, and I am the queen, I love Google, you can ask any of my colleagues, I love Google. But this was a little odd, um, because at the end of the Fine Arts Grant, typically, there's an amount, and so we can know what's coming. We have no idea. And so what we do is we put in the request for the number of teachers. And you guys saw the, I, what I went, what I did was I went back to the application and printed out page by page, took screenshots, so you guys could see what we submitted. And Michelle hasn't gotten an award, we haven't, it's not posted, we're not sure. We're pretty hopeful that they're gonna cover all of our teachers, and NDI comes out of that and stuff.
And it's in our operational budget.
And it's in our operational budget. And so when we look at, where does that money go? So typically, when you're looking at CTE and Next Gen, this is in order of how much we spend. So for the CTE and the Next Gen, most of that is supplies for the teacher. And then we look at travel for them to go to a conference. They did, um, the committee, the group, and when I say the committee, it was all the teachers. All the CTE teachers at that time had decided they would like to send different teachers, not everybody at once, it's too hard on their programs, but to send different teachers to the annual conference, and so that's in there. And purchase services, salaries, and benefits. What those are, those are the curriculum pieces for our PLTW class, that's our cybersecurity class. So that's that purchase, and salaries and benefits, what we're gonna go ahead and do is we, we had an outside person contracted to do some coordinating of internships. We're gonna go ahead and bring that in-house and pay our teacher to do that. And so, um, when we can, we do like to support our teachers, I'm, I'm really excited about that. I did get permission from the teacher to say, hey, would you be willing to do this as opposed to outsourcing? Because sometimes outsourcing is easier, but the teacher was all for it. Because she, the conversation we had is she knew the kids, she, she knows their schedules better. Um, when we look at the Fine Arts, it over eight, and this is why I put usually, is we don't know the amount yet. Over eighty-five percent is typically spent on salaries, benefits, things that go with that. And then we have very specific PD for our Fine Arts, then we have the supplies. Now, remember, this is just K through six. So when we have our teachers that need things like that, and then of course, our NDI contract. That's all that comes out of there. So those are the, are two really thick, heavy applications, I really tried to summarize them, 'cause I had a lot to present to you today, and I, I didn't want you to be angry with me on the summer board meeting. So do you have any questions about either CTE or Fine Arts?
Any questions for Mrs. Beras? What, Beras, I almost said Harris. Sorry. I just missed the first, I just missed the first letter. No questions? All right.
Those applications were thick, if you do, please just email. Thank you.
All right, you're the next one, I guess, with, are you gonna present together?
Well, I'm gonna present right.
Okay, perfect.
Dominantly.
Mr. Coker, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, Board members, Superintendent Hawkins, and of course, esteemed colleagues to my right, and all those on Cyberland. So I'm here to present to you the IDEAB grant, which is basically, it is our federal funding for provisions for special education related services, special education students all over. Hold on here, trying to catch my notes and, all right. So the overarching operating plan for the IDEBA, or IDEAB, sorry, I got.
It's a lot of letters.
It is a lot, yes. So, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B. All right, the operating plan, it does require a focus that we maintain kids in, in school, make sure they're not gonna drop out, and we want our graduation rates to be high. So in your board packet, you have the actual application that details everything, and I'm assuming, like Cindy said, it's a lot of reading, so enjoy. I don't really want you guys to read a lot during the summer, I'm kinda with Cindy on that, so. There's three sources this year, there's allocation and entitlement, um, those numbers, hundred, is that a million?
It's a billion.
It's a who?
It's a million.
Oh, I thought her billion, I was like, wow.
No, I wish, I wish.
I was like, wow, really? So, so the allocation entitlement is at one million, thirty, thirty, uh, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine. Preschool amasses to twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. And then your, our carryover is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, give or take, on there.
And that's part of the million, the carryover?
Yes, yes. Thank you for pointing that out, Michelle. No, I appreciate that. So as you can see, there's, uh, there's objectives that we have to meet. There's direct instruction under Objective One, um, which is direct instruction in extended school year, extended school year, uh, that pays for the extended school year IAs curriculum, any kind of professional development in classroom supplies. Objective Two is instructional support, supplies and incentives, travel assessment, supplies for ancillary. Objective Three is activities, provisions of special education and related services. This covers salaries and benefits for directors, secretary clerk. Objective Seven is private school funding, um, which is, is that correct, one thousand nine hundred and nineteen to the Montessori? Okay, that's our only private school, preschool sector. And then Objective Eight, both is excessive costs for elementary and secondary. Excessive cost is defined for, if you have a student saying they get X amount of money, any general ed student gets X amount of money from the state, you use that money first, and excess cost covers the rest for any kinda services needed for a special ed student. Hope that makes sense. All right, so preschool, um, the CDB transition, schools are responsible for services for a child's second birthday, so, um, usually they have meeting, transition meetings, get them into, uh, you know, having an IEP, and then set, setting up for preschool age. And we do have students that attend El Grito, the Child Development Center, that's part of Western, the Montessori, as well as our Silver Schools Academy, Silver Scholars Academy?
Here, I'm here.
Yeah, here and there. Okay, and that kinda sums up what I need, does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Coker? You're off the hook.
I'm off the hook. Well, thank you, guys, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And you'll see, I have to put some action items today, too.
It is, it is. It is, so there are two pieces, we'll have to take the agenda, and then next month, we'll have to take the minutes to post before they actually approve.
That's all part of the raid, so.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Perfect, thank you.
Ms. Beras, do you have anything else?
When you take a look at the excess cost, that's our MOE. So it's not numbers made up, there's an obligation that we have to provide for the state, and so Michelle does this fine balancing act. And it is a fine balancing act, she balances to the penny. So when we have conversation about how we're going to fiscally support our special education students, Michelle and I have to talk about where is that money coming from? Because it can't just come from our IDEAB. It has to, we, there's a proportion that we are required to provide. Because at the end of the day, all special education students are considered gen ed students first. And so that's, that's what our requirement is.
And that's a major task, and I say major, because she has to spin down to the penny, and it has to be accurate and well-balanced and approved by the head. So when they give a thumbs up that we've met our maintenance of effort, that's saying that the district has contributed its part for the benefit of all of our students, special ed, as well as gen, and gen ed, as far as those services. So it's a good job that she does. Is there anything you wanted to add, Michelle?
And there is a penalty involved if you don't meet the MOE. So, I mean, and MOE is basically what you spend out of your operational budget to above and beyond the special ed dollars, to show that we are making a maintenance of effort to provide for those students before IDEAB budget provides for them.
How much do we have to provide from our own budget? Like a, just a rough estimate?
It's about three million, a little over three million.
Oh, so we provide seventy-five percent, and they provide one, or twenty-five percent?
It depends on the student population and the number of students with IEPs, secondary and elementary.
Matthew's, which there.
It is, when you, when you take a look at the application in your packet, it's the last page in the packet. Those are, when you see those numbers, those aren't numbers coming in. Those are the numbers that we're required to provide through our operations budget.
Last page in the application, you said?
Last page, yes, and so it says on the top, you'll see, it'll say Silver Consolidated Schools, 'cause you have the application that has all these blue boxes, but the last two pages just kinda look like Excel boxes cut out. And so you'll, you'll see that in your packet when you take a look. And so it'll ask you, you know, total expenditures from state and local tax funds, total expenditures from federal funds. So they're ensuring that you're appropriating what's required for the students first out of your operations budget. And it is, it is quite a lot of money. And so you're right, when you, when you think about that. 'Cause you think, well, most of our special ed, you know, providing supports for our special ed students, most of it comes out of IDEAB. And when you look at it this way, that's really not the case. And it can't be the case. And it's, it's that major piece about the, um, special ed kids being gen ed kids first, that's where that comes from.
If they go out to funding in, in the lawsuit with Yasi Martinez, I suppose if they were meeting the maintenance of effort, we would not be in the situation that we're in now, which they still would.
Interesting. Any other question? I, I looked at this, but it was very French.
Yes, which is, which is difficult. And so now that you've heard the conversations, when you have time to gruminate over it, again, you can email myself or Mr. Coker on any of those questions. What does this mean, what does that look like, um, things like that? Michelle and I would be happy to answer those questions for you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Flores, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kahn, Mr. Kahn, please do a roll call.
President Ashley Montenegro.
Yes.
Vice President, Dr. Michelle Diaz. Pat, Secretary Patrick Kahn, yes. School Board Member Mike McMillan.
Yes.
School Board Member Eddie Flores.
Yes.
We are adjourned, and it is five fifty P M.
There's some time to grab a plate.
Yeah, there is, absolutely.
Yes, well, maybe. Thank you.
I'm not near as popular as everyone else. What day is today? All day long?
Twenty.
No, you're more popular.
William Hawkins.
The mostest, right?
No.
Uh-uh.
No?
Uh-uh. I thought about that. I was like, scoot over, scoot over.
Let me see, that's not gonna work. Gotcha. Thanks, sir. I got you. You want your pen back? Okay.
We ready? No, she's in Hawaii.
I should have known that, and I probably did know it, it just didn't register. I apologize.
That's okay. We all remember that she's out of town, yes.
Enjoying life.
Mm-hmm. Celebrating her graduation.
Yay!
All right. Everyone ready? He is ready. You guys good? All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, six oh three P. M. Welcome, members of the audience, Mr. Hawkins, members of administration, fellow board members. This is our regularly scheduled board meeting for June. Patrick, will you do a roll call?
Absolutely, Madam President. President Ashley Montenegro.
Here.
Vice President Michelle Diaz. Secretary Patrick Kahn, here. Board member Mike McMillan.
Here.
And board member Eddie Flores.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is pledge of allegiance. Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the United States of America as the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Next item on our agenda is review and approval of minutes for our May ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting, regular board meeting and work session. And I do believe that the minutes for Finance Committee from May fifth are also there. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, move to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. McMillan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kahn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number three, consideration and approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kahn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number four, information and presentations. These are the non-action items on our agenda. Under programs and presentations, we have Mr. Jack Herndon from First Savings Bank, President. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm happy to be able to come and see you all again and give you guys a thank you of allowing us to take in kind of partner in the debit card program that we've got put in place. All the individuals that are carrying a Silver High debit card, we have been able to amass four hundred and fifty dollar donation to go back to school.
Thank you.
So, yes, I'd just like to thank everyone for that, and before maybe just gather for a quick picture, and I'll be out of your hair.
Mr. Herndon, can you tell us about how individuals can sign up for that?
Well, all we need to do is have you come down to the bank and open a checking account. And you can either choose to have just a regular old debit card, or you can have a Silver High debit card. And it costs five dollars and ninety-five cents. The one, four dollars and ninety-five of it, it goes to the cost of actually producing it. One dollar goes into, we kick into the donation bucket. And then as you use that on a point of sale, whether it be Albertson's or Walmart or wherever, Mike asks, we take ten percent of those merchant fees that the business owners pay, and we're putting it into the bucket for the schools. So we also do have them for Cobre, and we also do have them for Western.
It's a great way to get back to them. We appreciate that.
And Silver High has gotten, has gotten the biggest check this year, so we've had really good success in getting Silver High cards out there.
I'm stuck.
Thank you, sir. My mistake, my sir. I'm not sure.
No. I mean, I'm trying to, but I gotta block the tape. And one more.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do you take the check back and just kind of erase it? How does that work? That's kind of new. I kind of look at it in my office. It's just like the dry erase stuff. Oh, no, 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 that's kind of cool. Well, then I need to wipe more, so I don't need to keep this here.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is Mrs. Claudia Smith, Silver High principal on the five-point-o scale. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President, Secretary Kahn, board members McMillan and Flores, Superintendent Hawkins. Just want to request that we do away with that five-oh scale again. It's not something I was in favor of when it initially got put through, but basically, it's not fair to all students, and that's what's grinding me here. It's not fair to students that tend to take, say, band multiple times. Their GPAs drop because band is not on a five-oh scale, where as a four-oh scale, their GPA kind of drops, and it's not in comparison because the other GPAs inflated. We had several students that took classes at Western, dual credit classes. Some were really close to getting their associates. Their GPA dropped under the five-oh scale because we don't control Western. It's a four-point-o scale. We had done our research previously, and we also brought in, again, at that time, none of our universities recognize the five-oh scale. We have to convert the GPA back. So we're just asking you in fairness to all of our students that were equitable, to everybody, and that we go back to a four-oh scale, and we don't have to convert anything anymore. Tammy has to convert everything back to a four-oh to send it off to universities anyway.
Ms. Smith, for those who may not be as familiar as to the nature of a four-point-o, four-point scale and a five-point scale, who might be watching in, can you kind of give us a little explanation as to what the four-point-o scale is?
Four-point-o is just an A. For an A, you get four points. A B, you get three, C, two, and a D, one. And when you go to the five-oh, the A becomes the five. So honors classes and AP classes are often given a higher bump in some schools. Ours had not had that. There is specific criteria, I don't have it in front of me, that outlines what you get. You have to take if you want to be Val or South. If you want to be in the top of your class, you can do that. There's clear criteria to follow and steps to follow. But on this four and five-oh scale, it almost inflates grades, so to speak, because you might be having an AP class, but are you telling me that a student working in a dual credit class, say, in AP calc or calculus at the university, they're not working as hard? So I just want it to be fair, a hundred percent fair to all of the kids involved. Does that make sense to everybody? Does everybody understand what I'm talking about?
So I'm just recalling, and I'm, by all means, we've had people in here that are like, we need to go back to this, this is not working. And it was more of like, when we brought it back, we didn't see the real effect, right? So like, it sounds great in theory, but whenever you actually put it into action, it creates something that's different than probably what we intended.
Maybe so, maybe so. I don't think there was anything malicious by putting it back in, but it does create problems because it creates additional work for people. And mostly, it's just not fair. It's forcing kids. We want kids in high school to take those exploratory classes. We want them, if they like band, take band. I don't want kids to say, I'm not taking band because I have to take this AP class. I want them to take things and have the same kind of playing field available for all their classes.
So I think we're back to kind of square one, is how do we incentivize taking those classes? Because that was our whole goal. In the beginning, it was to incentivize people taking those classes, and also because it felt like we were losing enrollment in those classes and a need, you know? So as we're looking at staffing, as we always are, if your AP classes only have five kids in it, what are, do you see what I'm saying? That was really the goal, if I recall correctly, was to incentivize kids to take the higher classes. And I hate that Dr. Diaz isn't here tonight because she was very vocal in that. And I even may motion for us to delay the vote, to take time to be able to discuss this as a board, because I think it's important. Not that, not that we're against it, but I just feel like we might need a little bit more like, what's the plan?
My thought process is those students that take those classes, they really honestly don't need a lot of push from anything. They're taking those classes because they want to take them anyway. My child was college bound. He took all those classes. I didn't have to say, Paul, do you think you need that AP class? He made his own schedule. I think what we don't want to do is say that the other classes aren't important either. And so if we're working on expanding our CTE classes into enrollment, I think this is an essential step so that those are all seen on the same playing field. That's really what I want. I want things to be fair for kids. And if we have to change things to do that, that's okay. As long as we're making it fair for the bulk of our students. Right now, I don't think this is fair.
Are you, forgive me.
Sure.
Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Smith, is the high school considering additional or different weighting or equal weighting for advanced courses, for example, AP, honors, or dual enrollment? Is that under consideration? Have you guys addressed this matter, or?
We, we looked at what could we do to make them all the same, and the only way to do that is to drop the scale. We can't control the curriculum at Western, so I can't say that's a five-oh. The only way to make it playing field level is go back to a four-point-o.
What would weighting look like?
What would additional weighting? Would there be any weighting for honors, AP, or dual enrollment? It will all be just a rank?
Right.
It will all counted?
It'll all be the same. The difference will be, and if you're choosing to vie for those top positions, there are specific criteria set up. If you want to be Val or South, you have to take a certain list of AP courses or honors courses.
A certain number of AP, a certain number of.
A tiebreaker was an ACT. We may need to look at that again because we're now going with the SAT.
So there would be no weighting at all for any additional courses?
No.
All equal?
All equal.
So I guess my next question is, have you seen them do weighting anywhere else? Like, is there another model that we could possibly?
When we looked, we, we couldn't find anything. Part of it has to do with we can't control universities. So we're not going to go to Western and say, by the way, we need a five-oh scale, so give us a five-oh scale.
No, but when those credits come back to our schools, we can weight them differently.
I.
Because a calculus at the university, right, is now counting as a math at the high school, correct?
It is, but it's not the same necessarily curriculum.
But it would be in our transcript versus their transcript.
It would be. I just would feel uncomfortable putting criteria on something and saying it's a five-oh. I've never sat through any of those classes.
So I guess I'm not saying five-oh. I'm saying weighting.
Weighting. Yeah, I think we want to leave it all the same. That way, it, it looks the same on paper. I kind of feel like if we weight things, we're back to the five-oh scale.
Where's your counselors standing right now?
Counselors, they really don't, they, they're with, they're with us on this. They really would like to see everything back on a four-oh scale. I mean, I want things to be equally represented. We have kids that are getting associates degrees, and yet that doesn't seem as important as an AP class, when in reality is it? And if you're the one getting those classes to be a welder, those classes are just as important as an AP class to that student. These kids will go out and get jobs right away, probably make decent money. I, I just feel like the scale doesn't encourage it. It eliminates kids from wanting to do that because they go, oh, no, I, I need to get that Western class instead of this honors class. And if it's on a four-oh scale, it's all fair. If a student decides to take those extra classes, that's fine. More power to them.
So I just don't feel like you're hearing what I'm saying?
Maybe not.
It's not about the five-point-o scale. It's about weighting classes.
I don't want to, I don't want to wait anything. If we put classes in and say to be Val or South, here's the list of courses you need to take. That's what I think we should be doing, not doing any weighting on anything. When you start doing that, then every class you have to look at. I just kind of feel like it was fine before with a four-oh. Let's go back to, it worked for Silver High prior to this. I feel like we had some kids that could have been valedictorian, but they weren't. They didn't have enough.
We heard from those parents.
Yeah. We didn't have enough in, they didn't have enough classes to add up to a five-oh to raise their GPA any more than it was. One student even told me he stopped taking classes at, at Western because his GPA was dropping. And if you're comparing a four and a five, it would drop overall, his overall GPA drop. That's not fair.
So what's your rollout going to look like?
I think we need to, it rolled in, so I think we go back to the incoming freshmen, start there, and roll it back up. That way, we, we're not penalizing any of the kids that were taking classes because of that, and we just move forward. It's gonna take a couple of years to roll out, but I'd rather do that way than penalize students for possibly, you know, not being on the right side of that. I mean, we can do it any way you want, but I would prefer to just start with incoming kids and move forward from there.
Oh, the list for valedictorian and salutatorian, that. So if a kid wants to just do, I mean, that, that feels like how you're saying, it's not fair, it's not fair. Those kids have to take those classes. They can't just take anything.
They have to take a number of those, yes. There's, there's a set number, and again, I can get it from the handbook for you guys and get it to Mr. Hawkins to give you, but it's, it says exactly what you need to take if you choose to go that route. Not all kids choose to go that route, but if you're a student that really aspires for that, it gives you the opportunity to go for it.
Do you have an idea of what on those items?
It's so many honors classes. It's, I believe, Spanish is on there. There's some other things. And like I said, it's all honors, math, ELA, history. I don't think there's any electives in there or other than Spanish. No CTE classes, nothing like that.
Are they all AP or?
Honors or AP. Honors or AP. We're trying to still kind of keep a handle on not losing any of those.
So the person that you're describing, how you're saying, you know, you're trying to make it fair, the person that you're describing that decides to go for the associates is probably not going to be your valedictorian.
They could still be close, but this way, it's on paper, and they know, okay, if I want to do that, I have to do this. Whereas before, you didn't really get a choice. You'd have to take the honors if you wanted those in order to be Val or South. You don't get a choice, not if that's really what you want to do. And we had kids do that.
So our valedictorians and salutatorians, they had to do the list and have the highest GPA? Is that how that works?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely correct. And like I said, it just, I would like it to be fair.
I guess I'm just not seeing how it wouldn't be fair if they already have to take those classes.
It's not fair because when we implemented it, it came on right away. And what it means.
Yeah, the rollout was definitely, I mentioned that to the rollout.
I didn't care for the rollout. So if you were already, had already taken a bunch of classes at Western, now you have to shift gears to come over here and suddenly hit all these honors classes. Even though one of these kids that I'm aware of was taking quite a few of the honors and AP, it wasn't enough because when somebody else was taking one more extra class over here, he was over there working on Western classes.
Right. And I think we as a board would, would take the, you know, the rap on that because there was no guidance from administration to say, we should roll this out, you know, in a uniform way where it doesn't affect those types of people. There was no conversation like that around when the rollout happened, at least that I'm aware of.
No, there wasn't because it was something that we didn't want at that time. And moving forward, I've already spoken with Mr. Burke, who'll be assistant principal, and he is in full agreement. He'd rather work off a four-oh scale.
But you'll have to, I mean, you'll still have to deal with three years of it.
We'll, we'll deal with three years of it so that it's fair and that it comes in clean. But we'd like to at least start it with incoming freshmen.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other question?
So just to reiterate, this would be just so those students can take the, like, band and other.
Any elective, any CTE class, any, any Western class. Any elective, any CTE class, any, any Western class, take those classes and not be penalized for taking them. And honestly, we want kids to explore classes in high school.
And I, I know that was a lot of parents, they are wanting their students to take those, like band and choir, et cetera. I'm a big band person, that's why I say that.
Yes.
You know, but they said it wasn't fair. I mean, they said that's just the way it is right now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan, did you have something?
Yes, I, I go back to when we looked at this and, and the reason behind it was to incentivize those students when they were taking the AP and the honors classes.
Yes, sir.
And, um, so I go back to that and we, when we did that, we knew that we would have to convert that five point oh to a four point oh. So that's, I mean, that's not a surprise that we had to do the conversion to the college credits. We knew that upfront. Um, I think looking at this and tweaking it to make it better now that we've gone through a couple of years would be uh, an option that we should explore because we're in a sense kind of throwing it out after, was it two or three years that we've, we've done it? We should look at, instead of throwing it completely out, looking at tweaking it from what I understand. For example, the band was a zero hour and they were getting a grade for zero hour and that was the reason the GPA was dropping. Because they had an additional class that they were getting a credit for as opposed to.
Even if they just take four years of band, or let's say four years of choir or four years of art, those are regular education classes. We don't have any AP or honors. So those kids will always only be able to get an A and a four point oh. No matter how hard they work, how talented they are, that's the best they can do. Whereas in the other classes, there's a five oh. And I, I just have trouble saying that's not as important as the AP class or honors class. These classes are equally as important. And I think by not having the same grading scale, we're saying they're not. CTE classes are really important to me as well.
Madam President, members of the board, i- in, in an effort to help clarify, I think I'm understanding where there's a little bit of continuity in the communication. When you refer to five point oh, you're saying the, the honors or AP weighting of those classes give it an additional category which separates it from a four point oh and five point oh. And so your regular ed classes or any of your classes that are not receiving additional weighting, whether it's ten point or whatever that weighting is. Any of those classes that don't get weighting are classified as four point oh. Any class that is identified as having additional weighting, your honors or AP, you use the language five point oh to, to, to characterize those.
Yes, sir.
So one of the questions was if you added, uh, additional weighting to other courses, would that rectify the situation? If you made dual credit classes that are currently four point oh, added the same weighting to make them five point oh, would that be better? The question that you are asked is that. The question you posed is, it would add extra weighting to those classes preferentially, but would it be equal for football or athletics? Or band or choir or any of the other classes that are not honors or extra? And so that's where you're delineating. You're saying all classes have the same weighting.
That's what we would like. We would like the consistency of one scale and then we don't have to do all the extra work as far as the registrar. Tammy has to go back and check every single one and make sure it gets reconverted. None of our universities use it. They don't care if it's a five oh, they, they're going to reconvert it anyway. UNM uses a set list of classes that they look only at those classes and the GPA. None of our universities say we love a five point oh scale. It doesn't mean anything.
And Madam President, uh, so.
Yes, that's right.
So going back to the, so bands didn't have a zero hour that got a grade?
They get a grade, yes, for the class, but because most band students take it for years. Because you have the marching band and the concert band. So instead of taking an honors class for four years, they're taking a regular ed class out of four point oh scale. I don't know about you, but I think what the band does is really essential for our school.
Correct, I understand that, but they weren't getting an additional grade for zero hour because that was what.
It carries, it carries in first, that's one component of that, but go with art then. Say art or any of the ag classes, those are on, you can take ag for four years and it's still a four point oh. You will never get a five point oh out of that. So are, are we going to put everything and raise everything and tweak all these little things? Or is it easier to go down to the four? That's kind of where I'm at. I'm looking what's going to be easier for the office, for the guidance department, for our students to understand. We have a bunch of students that didn't even know there was a five oh scale this year. And they're like, I don't understand this. And I'm like, well, we tried to explain it, but.
The, the other question is, is, uh, how many students actually had a, over a four point oh between a four point oh and a five?
That, I'd have to get the numbers for you, which I can do. I don't have that with me. We looked at that, but that was in February. So I'll have to look at that. I can get you that number?
Because that's the only conversion that's taken.
Yes, that is. That conversion for those students that are in those classes, correct?
Cause I, we talk about being fair and, and kind of the flip side of that is the kids that take the easy classes. The walk of size, maybe one example, maybe PE, some of the easier classes, they take those, they fill their schedule with those. And so that bumps them up, I think, in a, in a way that's maybe unfair compared to the students when you're trying to create fairness to, as compared to students that are taking all honors courses. And those two students would be at the same four point oh level. So that's, that's, I keep thinking the flip side of that, the fairness issue. And, and I have a hard time saying that, well, it's fair if we go back to four point oh and then you have a situation like that where you've got a student that is taking all honors and AP and then you have another student that's taking very easy classes and they're, come graduation, they're going to be the same.
No, they won't be the same because if you take these other classes, you are in the running for additional awards. If you're higher in rank, colleges are going to look at you differently, so I don't think it is the same. We're going to start looking at some of the criteria to graduate because I don't, I'm, I understand what you're saying about taking too many easy classes. Um, we're going to see if we can increase the number eventually of like CTE classes that kids take and get some more expanding to other areas.
But if we're at a four point oh and they take the same classes and they all get As and that ease, that kid taking all the easy classes would have the four point oh and so would the.
They would, but they still wouldn't be on the same playing field because they couldn't be considered for valedictorian if they didn't take the AP or honors classes. So they're, that, that little component sets those other kids aside.
That's where the additional weighting would be for valedictorian and salutatorian.
Right. We can do that without the weighting. We can just do it by the criteria of these classes. The weighting doesn't have to be done. We can find some other ways to possibly make incentives, but the weighting doesn't have to be done. Those kids are separated anyway because of their GPA in those classes. The honors classes would separate them. I will get you those numbers.
How many electives that we, do we have that are AP? How many AP, AP classes do we have?
We have AP chemistry. Um, we're looking to see if we can get an AP US history.
Or honors, let me say APs are.
AP honors. So there's an honors course in science, math, history, ELA. There's an honors in each of those. But we have the AP, um, Lang and Lit. One of those won't be this year. We have AP chemistry. We, next year, not this coming year, but the following year, we want to look at adding AP physics. We're, we're looking at maybe changing some of the science classes. Um, National History Day is considered AP. And then like I said, we're looking to add an AP history class that we start offering every other year. Um, in upcoming years, I'm hoping to add AP biology as well. The calculus class, um, there's been a lot of kids ask about that. The problem is we can't run that with three kids. We need a few more kids to get in there. So we're working on the math scope and sequence to see if we can raise the rigor a little bit more in the classes so we can eventually offer something like that.
So every kid has to take the same amount of credits, whether it's math, history, science, language arts, electives.
There's a set number to come in.
So the kids that choose to take all regular, so like what I'm saying is the kids have a choice. They can choose to take AP or they can choose to take regular at all levels.
Yes, AP is opt, is a student choice only.
Right, so at every level, they can choose that, but their electives are all the same, right?
Electives are comparable unless you start taking Western and doing the dual.
But those would be four point oh too.
Yes.
So they would be all the same, is what I'm saying. So really it does boil down to this kid's choice is like, do I want to take AP or regular? And all my core classes that are all required for my, for my, I don't.
Graduating.
Yeah, for my.
Diplomats, yeah.
And then electives are all the same. Right?
Pretty much.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is like, how is, how is band? Like, why are we talking about, because CTE would be an elective, right?
Yes.
So those are still all fours.
Yes, so is band. It's a four.
So the only thing we're really talking about is core classes.
We're talking about the fact that these classes are a five oh. And we have kids earning dual credit and taking four years of band and those kids aren't considered the same because those are five oh, these are four oh.
But they all have to take the same core classes. So like, let's say it's that student.
It's choice. I understand that. I just kind of feel like the five oh doesn't do anything. Tell me what the five oh does. I can tell you what my, my son had a four point six seven in high school. What does that mean?
He took a lot of advanced classes.
He took a lot of advanced classes, yes, he did. And he got As in all of them, okay? But when you go to college, the first thing they do is say, we don't need that, let's go back down to this. So they put his GPA back down to a four oh scale. So he had like a three point, I want to say like a nine nine something, okay? So he chose to take those classes. It had to do with him. It didn't have to do with me. I wouldn't have taken some of those he took. They have for, um, AP calculus. I would have never taken that in high school, but it was his choice. It didn't show him anything. It just showed him, okay, um, great, Paul, your ACT is good. You got a lot of scholarship money from that. But the five oh doesn't get you additional scholarships. They're going to convert it back to a four oh and say, okay, you're eligible for these. Every single university we spoke to, the five oh meant nothing to them. I feel like we're mucking it up when it's four oh. If it can be four oh from day one, is elementary a five oh or four? It's only confusing when you change it. I think the consistency of having a four oh would be better for our students. Parents, everybody.
Madam President, members of the board, so it, it might be helpful for this conversation. And, and I think you had mentioned at the beginning of this particular part of the, the board meeting that this was more of a presentation. And so we won't be making, we, you won't be making a decision as a vote today. One of the things that might be helpful is to have a document that kind of reflects what it would look like, uh, with the four point oh, with the differentiation of, of the courses that would qualify for students who are interested, taking a specific track. If they were going into the top 10%, i.e. valedictorian, salutatorian category as opposed to the other classes. And that way, looking at that list might help to clarify whether or not a dual credit English class, if, if such a class existed, would count in that same pathway with the, the AP honors or not. I think that's why I think your, your question is if only honors or AP classes count and a student takes dual credit English, which we said is equal, does that?
It's just equal to an English credit, not necessarily AP or honors. We don't have the curriculum from them. So I can only tell you what ours are worth. And they give us a, a four point oh scale. They don't have a five oh scale at Western, am I correct?
But we have the capability when we bring it into our system to say a dual credit could be five point oh. Like, that's in our.
Yeah, that's asking us to ch- change their, if it's a four over there, how can it communicate, how do I make it?
You're talking about how you add the weighting.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we would feel comfortable weighting university classes. What if somebody takes online classes?
It's no different. Honors is just honors. AP is certified, honors is just honors. So we're saying honors gets five, but we won't bring a dual credit input five. So it's no different, in my opinion.
Except for we don't control those classes, so we're only, they're sending us the transcript, we have the credit.
But like you said, you feel like, like that should be weighted the same. Like, you feel like it's just as important.
Should, I don't think it should be weighted. I think we should drop the weighting so they're all equal. If we raise this one, then we have to raise everything. And I don't know that, that walk of size is a five oh class, so.
No, you, you do know that it's not a five oh class.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's not a five oh class, so why would we want to? I think it's confusing having two scales. Because every time we have to explain it to a parent that comes in and says, I don't understand this, they're confused. They don't understand why it's not just a four oh. They went to school, it was a four oh.
What's interesting is like, I had it when I was there, um, I don't know anybody else, but it wasn't this confusing and it wasn't this big of a hassle. So that's why it's like, why it's become such, and maybe even Mr. Wahaka could speak to it. I think that's when it went away, right? I'm sorry to pull you in, but I know you have wisdom. Is, is that when it went away? Do you recall?
I don't recall. I want to say it was like late nineties or early two thousands when it went away?
Okay, I was two thousand and two, so it was still there then. Okay. And does, and no one could, could speak to you why it went away then? Bummer.
So it definitely is a conversation that is worth having as you, and I, and Madam President, members of the board, I apologize. Mr. Miller?
Yes, and I, Madam President, Mr. Hawkins, I, I would, as, like I said earlier, as opposed to just swinging the pendulum all the way to the other side, I would like to explore options of how can we tweak the unintended con- consequences to make this more fair or a, a fairer playing field as opposed to swinging all the way back. And if we need to have another presentation or discussion on that at another time, we can, we can certainly do that.
That's fine, we can do that. We can bring more information. I just don't want to create more work for the people that are doing this.
Well, could you just do like a, like a, cause we know, I mean, a parent came to our meeting not that many months ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you like block out their names and show us a case study and say, this is how this affected this person? This is how it affected this person?
I'd be happy to do that.
So that we can see what it's doing. Cause it's like, in my mind, I'm like, just pick the AP for math, science, whatever, whatever's available if that's what you're trying to do. And it, and it works because it's like core classes. Electives shouldn't, should be electives. So if we're comparing elective to elective, they're all four, four, four point oh's, I don't see the disparity.
So we're saying a college class, let's say somebody took calculus.
Be careful, because you don't want to put a five four oh on that, but you do think it's very important.
But a college class, I, I think it's important. We have a lot of kids that are getting close to associate's degrees. I feel like we're saying that's not important or CTE classes, it's not important. And I think those classes are very important. I think we need more kids in those classes in general, but it's a four oh as opposed to a five oh.
So CTE would be electives, correct?
That's electives.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Dual enrollment, there are a few that count as core.
There's a few that count as core.
But not, but most of them are electives, yeah.
Some are electives.
Find back to like, we're comparing four point oh to four point oh if it's elective to elective.
Right. But if it's core, it's not necessarily the same comparison.
Right.
Madam President, one, one other piece I think that plays into this, because there's, there's a discussion about, you know, we want kids to explore here. And I totally agree with you. I think the other aspect we would need to work on is senior release. That's something that I think, uh, I know has kind of been a thorn in my side, that we turn kids loose as soon as they meet their minimum graduation requirements. And we should maybe look at changing that or tweaking that so we don't turn them loose at second period or third period or whenever, when they're a senior and say, okay, pick something that you might be interested in, fill out your schedule. And then we kind of take care of the, you know, do some exploration. We have CTE classes and we've got electives that are, that are fuller or, and the kids would hopefully get a, a more rounded education as well.
Thank you. I would agree with you. I will, we've been trying to kick that around. We have some things in that if they come true, we might have an answer for part of that anyway, but we're working on it. But any consideration and like I said, I'll get you the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Item number four eight three S C E A. I did not see an email, did you guys?
Madam President, members of the board, so she, uh, she did send her apologies that she would not be able to make this. Madam President, members of the board, so she, uh, she did send her apologies that she would not be able to make this meeting. And so to that point, I don't think that they were able to send us any concerns or questions when they contacted us.
Perfect. Item number five, information to the board, uh, five A Superintendent, uh, Mr. Hawkins.
Madam President, members of the board, um, there are many components of my job that I appreciate. An opportunity to go to the classroom, um, getting the cheer for our, our, our teams, whether it be athletics or academic. Um, one of the, the other privileges that I get is to take a moment to acknowledge the successes of students and staff. And this time, uh, great, gives me great pleasure to acknowledge one of our employees for excellent and student achievement award recipient. Oftentimes, we think of these types of awards as focused on individuals who are in the classroom. But actuality, when the, the board looks at excellence in student achievement, this is focused on anyone who works within our school system, who has a huge impact on the successes of our students. And that can be anyone from nutritional services, custodial services, teacher, parapro, a- administrator. These are individuals who have given of their time, their work, their dedication, and devoting it to the betterment of students i- in Grand County and Silver Schools. And so it is my absolute pleasure to acknowledge Marnie Stewart as this year's recipient of the Excellence in Student Achievement Award. Would you please come forward? Marnie, so I'm going to read some things about you aloud, which is always makes us uncomfortable, but this is also religious. So I, I get to stand next to you in bask in your glory as I say these wonderful things about you. So I hope I say it proudly, so, uh, Marnie Stewart is retired, uh, from Texas after twenty-three years in transportation with two big school districts. She moved to Silver City in the year two thousand. The first time she applied for a job in Silver Schools, sadly, we, we did not hire her. In two thousand one, uh, she got the job and spent the next six years at Central Office working transportation, meeting with wonderful staff, coaches, contractors, and parents. In two thousand seven, Marnie went to Harrison Schmidt as a clerk for the first time and worked in a school setting. The dedication to education and the untold hours, and if you worked in that office, it was untold hours, that our educators, uh, had blew her mind. Harrison was great when teachers came back to begin the school year, but the first days of ki- when kids were back, it was amazing, she shares. Her four years at Harrison flew by, she met great kids, parents, and gained a new perspective as far as education of students. She retired in two thousand eleven and continued to drive activity trips, cheer students in both athletic and academic activities. And it was the best job she'd ever done and drove until the end of the two thousand twenty, two thousand two one school year. And so being that, being there, being a, a steady, a steadfast fixture for students all those years, for, for them to be able to depend on you has been amazing. Um, and you've touched many, many lives and many staff members' lives, and so it's just been a pleasure to know you and knowing how you touch our kids.
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have to present to you this excellence to you. Presented by the New Mexico School Board Association in cooperation with our local school board in recognition of outstanding role played in improving student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then if you'd like to share any words of wisdom, you may.
Friend, thank you so much. Mr. Flores, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, thank you.
Truly honored, truly blessed.
Watching you change and grow, I love you. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, thank you so much for the power and what in the world, but you guys. No, he's not going to be in the kitchen, he won't.
All of them?
I never made it to him.
How many pencils and crayons and lunches did you buy?
Ah, and anything they were selling, yes, you can just buy them one and not buy them all.
Thank you again, Marnie Stewart.
I want to say thank you to every one of you, this has been such a good time. It's not, it's not always been fun, transportation is not ever always fun, but the activity driving was amazing, and I appreciate all of you for always signing and saying I could transport your kids for the privilege of watching them all grow up, they all came on, except my Harrison kids, they came on the radar at about sixth grade and we got to watch them grow, and it was just wonderful. So thank you for this, I appreciate it so much.
So well deserved.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is five A two, NMSBA Scholarship Recipient Samantha Jones from, uh, Cliff.
Madam President, members of the board, um, the, the board submitted a name, uh, to be considered a couple of months ago for this award. It was a, it was a tight race for some of the names that were selected, but Samantha Jones was selected. And as you can see, the School Board Association, uh, appreciated your submission and recognized her as well. And so Samantha Jones, who couldn't be here today, probably, she's probably taking a course somewhere, um, a- as hard as she works. Marnie knows her well, um, I will read, if you don't mind, just the, the, one of the letters that acknowledged the submission and, and set for her to be recognized in this way. Uh, this comes from Janine Garnett, the principal at Cliff High School. It is our pleasure and honor to recommend Samantha Jones for your nomination for the New Mexico School Board Association Scholarship. Together as Samantha's principal and school counselor, and that includes Tommy Alsop, we strongly believe Samantha is deserve, is a deserving candidate to be recipient of such an honor. Samantha is a student that exemplifies academic excellence, leadership, and service to her school and community. Currently Samantha holds a cumulative GPA of four point two four nine three and is ranked second in her graduating class. One thing that sets Samantha apart is though, is through the dual credit program. She will graduate from Western New Mexico University with an associate's degree in criminal justice this May, which she did. So I believe she got her associate first, uh, before she will even graduate from high school. Samantha has worked extremely hard, often having to petition to overload her dual credit courses in order to reach this accomplishment. We feel it's also valid to note that her high GPA is reflective of her earning only As in each dual credit class she's taken on. She's maintained her A honors status throughout her high school as well as through WNMU's Associate Program. She speaks to her diligent, this speaks to her diligence and determination to be successful as well as the high level of standards she holds for herself. Samantha has also made her, made it her business to serve in her community and school as a priority as well. Samantha has volunteered each summer from two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one to teach and/or serve as the Assistant Director at Vacation Bible School. She most recently spent time during her spring break in March of two thousand twenty-two volunteering her time in the Grant County DWI misdemeanor compliance program. She's also participated in numerous leadership roles in community and school clubs and is currently serving as the president of the following clubs. BPA, FCC LA, 4H, FFA, National History, NHS, excuse me, Key Club, and Student Council, in which, in which each area encompasses an element of service to the school and her community. We have absolutely no reservations in recommending Samantha for the, for this nomination for the NMSBA s- scholarship. They feel she is deserving and an ideal choice for this honor as she personifies the four criteria this award is based on. Leadership, academic performance, community involvement, and extracurricular activities. This is one of the few letters that were submitted for her that encompassed why she was selected at the state level. So we, we salute her and acknowledge her success. Again, she is likely currently, uh, continuing her education as we speak and could not be here, but we just want to take knowledge of her successes as this came out, uh, after our previous board meeting.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda, five A three, Stutor Education Update.
Madam President, members of the board, I briefly want to bring to you the continuation of our work on the strategic plan. Uh, I attended and participated in, uh, the re- two sessions offered in which, uh, Dr. Jono Butler worked with, uh, members of our steering committee and going from focusing on our pillars and our goals and now bringing that in and narrowing it into, uh, developing a mission for the district, vision, and values. And so when we talk about mission and vision, vision is what we aspire to be. Vision is what gets us up every morning and every afternoon, and this is what we want to achieve in our long-term successes. The mission is how we get to the vision. And so when you look at drafting a mission and a vision, you look at those two components. It's easy sometimes to get things confused, mission is what we do to achieve the vision. The values, that's who we are as a district, is what we represent, is what we hold dear, is what we hope to instill in both our students and our staff to represent. And so those are the conversations that she's currently having. Um, if you flip to the back of the second or third page, you can see what our current mission statement is and our current vision statement is. Um, as you read through the mission statement and the vision statement, both of which are, um, well executed, um, they're, they're, they're well written, I'm trying to find the right word to describe them. Um, I will say that the mission statement, as you look at it, um, while it is well writ- written and well crafted, it, in my opinion, attempts to encompass a lot of everything, right? And what you want to do is kind of scale that back a little bit and craft it in a little, as well as looking at our vision statement, what the, what the committee is working on is continuing to improve upon that, if there's anything to improve, and if there's any language or word choice that will enhance and, and inspire our staff further. And so they're reviewing our current district mission and vision statement, and you can see their thoughts from those, those meetings and just kind of giving you an update. And so by this time next board meeting, we ma- we will have a strategic plan that involves a mission and vision and values, uh, re- rewritten or updated.
Awesome, so my next meeting will possibly be adopting a mission and a vision?
As well as a strategic plan, I think that Dr. Jono Butler will be at a point where she'll be, she will be ready to present that. The next conversation that we will have as it relates to this is developing a scorecard. Remember, your, your strategic plan is not an overly complex document, instead, and, and, and actuality is a document that anyone, anywhere should be able to put their hands on and see quite clearly and simply what it is we hope to achieve in the next two to three to five years. From that strategic plan, it is up to the, the, the district at the board to now craft out a strategic, uh, action step that we're going to take to achieve that plan. And that's where your scorecard comes in. One of the reasons that the board selected Stutor was you liked the opportunity that they posed in helping to create a long-term relationship and helping gear us and tar- and keep us focused on what it is we want to achieve. And so we will likely hear from them in what that scorecard could look like and helping to craft strategic targets. If that's not something we want to do with Stutor Education, we'll still be able to do that. It would be something that I would propose that we do as far as having an evaluation of whether or not we're adhering to what we, we want to achieve in our district. Oftentimes, districts will craft a strategic plan or a facilities master plan because it meets a requirement of some sort, and then it gets set on the shelf and then reviewed two or three years later when someone needs it. But what I hope to use with this document is a guiding post for us as a district and showing our community that we're here for them and we're here, here, going to meet their needs. Any questions for me?
Nope, all right, next item on our agenda, five A four, uh, NMSBA twenty twenty-two Law Conference.
And I will likewise keep this brief, Madam President, members of the board. For those who are able to attend the law conference, we saw some language, um, that centered truly, uh, around Yasi Martinez, uh, as well as focusing on, um, the First Amendment, there was conversations as it relates to First Amendment as it relates to social media that continues to circulate. Uh, what I was able to do this morning was send to you, to the board members, um, uh, through an email, a list of all, a, a linked, uh, list of all the presentations that were done, uh, at the law conference as well as have it hyperlinked so that you can click and download the presentations. Last time I think I presented to you a big binder, and I wasn't sure, um, if the big binder was the way to go, so I scaled it back and, and hopes that that might save a few trees and likewise still make it convenient for you and your devices. If there are any particular, um, presentations that you would like paper copies of, we will absolutely print those out for you. A couple of keep, to keep in mind, is the comp, is the presentation on cannabis? Is that's going to continue to be a high topic, wow, word choice, an interesting topic? As well as the OMA, I, I apologize, as well as the OMA presentation, there was some clarity on that as well. There's still to, still, still some focus on questions on which meetings count and what are the required documents. I did have a conversation with Mr. Giann as well, and so I'll share that with, with you a, a, a little later. There was presentations on, uh, oversight for financial budgeting that I think is also worth focusing in on as well. But I wanted to just make it, make you aware that I did send that out to you and just make sure I hit those highlight, highlights for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hawkins? All right, item five B, Mr. Luis Alvarez, Associate Superintendent, you're welcome.
Good, good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board, peers and colleagues, Mr. Hawkins and everybody in Cyberland. Uh, as you look at your personnel report, you'll notice that we were extremely busy from the last time that we presented. Uh, there were a lot of vacancies, and of course it is this time of the year. Uh, what I am happy to report is that if you look at that, uh, the number of vacancies filled is, is, uh, it's a good, healthy representation, everything from our coaches to our special ed, to our, uh, teachers, uh, as well as administrators. I'm happy to say that as of right now, all of our administrative, uh, positions have been filled, uh, so we're moving forward. Uh, we have great candidates, uh, new, fresh blood, and, uh, so I'm really, really excited to go ahead and start working with these fine individuals. Uh, as far as on our vacancies, we do still have some vacancies that have come up recently, and, uh, we are still currently at ninety-six percent, uh, staffed. So we currently have fourteen, uh, posted positions. Uh, some of these positions are currently being interviewed right now, uh, since this report. So hopefully we'll go ahead and continue to window it down, and, uh, we have been very, very fortunate in finding good candidates, so. Very, very pleased.
Thank you, do you have anything else for the board? That's it, huh? Any questions for Mr. Alvarez? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Five C, Mrs. Cindy Barris.
Good evening again, Madam President, board, Superintendent Hawkins, colleagues and guests. Um, real quick, I wanted to give you enrollment, I always give you enrollment, so this is as of the last day of school. And so it does pull in a little low, um, but it's common for the last day of school. Parents often think, or kids often think, I'm going to go, and then they don't. And so we, we should see this come back, we also, I'm happy to report, have a few people who enrolled with us and went to summer school that were elsewhere, but they came to us, they're all, they're enrolled. Once we do the rollover, we'll see them within Power School, but they're enrolled with us and took advantage of summer school, so I'm very excited to report that. But what I do have for you, you know, you have all these great numbers, but at the very bottom, and you guys have that, is our summer school enrollment. Now, we did some things this year that we hadn't been able to do in a while. Um, we, our summer programs, if you take a look at Harrison, we had summer school at Harrison from, for grades one through six. And so we had some, some really good turnout there. It was fun to see the kids come for the first time, and it was, you saw a little bit of nervousness because all of the schools were at Harrison. And so we, what we did this year, and we made it eligible to all of our elementaries, it wasn't just Harrison kids. So last year when we did the jump start at Harrison, it was only for Harrison kids. So we got the recommendation and, and brought kids in, and so when you're looking at, when I say these are good-looking numbers, you're thinking, wow Cindy, those are kind of low, but remember, this is an intervention time. So when you're looking at those numbers, that's exactly what we're looking for to help support students and, and bridge some of those, um, gaps in acceleration. Middle school for the first time, I don't know if ever, but at least for a while, did seventh grade. If you had not had the opportunity and you have some time this week, that is a great program. What they are doing is we partnered with NMSU and Steaming Ahead, and so they do their academics, their recovery kind of. What they are doing is we've partnered with NMSU and Steaming Ahead, and so they do their academics, their recovery kind of information, closing of the gaps up until about eleven o'clock, and then at eleven o'clock, they split and they do two different things. Eighth grade is doing drones. They have to learn aviation terms. They're building launch pads with Legos. They're landing and having conversations. Mr. Hawkins had this great video, but if you get the opportunity, you know, they're only going to be there for about three more days, stop in. It's about eleven o'clock. Seventh grade is doing rockets. And what I can tell you, I had a meeting with the principals for summer school today. There have been zero discipline issues at middle school with the summer school kids because of what we're doing. And so Star Cruz, the principal for summer school, and greatly the principal, you know, for next year, she was so excited, and that conversation led the conversation we had with all of the principals. And she said, "Cindy, that program really speaks for itself." And so now she's like, "Okay, how do we make it bigger? How do we recruit? How do we do all of these things?" Because she saw the benefits. And kids who struggled with behavior or struggled in the classroom found a way to excel. And so the looks on their faces, the accomplishments that they've had is something that they hadn't, they hadn't felt in the classroom. Sometimes, you know, they may not be, you know, some students may not always be the star in math or ELA, but here they can excel and just have a grand time. And so learning all of those other pieces in addition, and how that supports the math, you know, they're able to fulfill that. So that was, when she said zero discipline issues, they had a little bit of an issue day two, but that's typical. But zero after that, and their attendance, it takes care of itself. And so if you do get the opportunity, that's what we saw in middle school. Cliff did something very interesting this year. What they did was they did a support and an enrichment. And so they have students who need an area of support and students who need enriching, and they were able to do that with two teachers. You see, one teacher took all of the support kids and one teacher took all of the enrichment kids, and that's the way they did it that way. When you take a look at high school, we have a large number of high school students. Here's the thing about high school. When you see the large number in ninth and tenth grade, you know, four years is not a long time when you're an adult. Four years is an eternity when you're in high school. And so what you often see is our students in ninth and tenth grade don't really figure it out, like, "Hey, these credits are kind of important," until about their junior, senior year. And so when we were looking at the data, we need to reconsider some of the things and maybe see what we've learned at the middle school for our ninth and tenth grade. Because even when you're looking at what they're recovering, the ninth and tenth grade students aren't recovering as the eleventh and twelfth grade students are. Because a lot of the twelfth grader are like, "Oh, shanks, I want to get out of here in my four years. I don't want to extend the time." So we had some really good candid conversation in front of students so they could hear the adults talking about, and we were in a freshman class purposefully, and so we had this adult conversation about, "Yeah, it's really hard because the kids don't really figure it out, and so now you've attended all of summer school. You don't get the credit. You're going to do this again next year." Like, I left Silver High probably more than the next person does, but if I was going to school, I really would only want to put four years. So we had this really good dialogue going on. You know, I was peeking over, and all the kids kind of stopped and looked at us because there was such a small percentage that was, that were passing. And so we're going to need to reconsider that piece. It's the flip for our juniors and seniors. It's literally the percentage flip. What I am super-duper excited about is that number sixteen in geometry. You know, this was our first foray into doing some enrichment like that. And I can tell you, I spoke to the teacher the other day, asked her how it was going. She was super excited, and she said to me, "The kids are doing so well. They're learning the, you know, the copious amounts of notes, the assessments, things like that." She says, "I'm afraid you guys are going to think I'm cheating because the kids are really doing that well." You know, she has a game plan to get everything through one month, all of geometry into one month, and those kids are really, really pushing forward. When I, in my mind, when we started this, I thought, "If I can get ten kids to finish, we would be good." I think she's only lost like three or four kids, and so these kids have stuck with it the whole time. You know, creating groups of their own, learning the information, taking the notes, showing what they've learned on their assessment. So I'm really, I'm really proud of the teacher and the students in this program. It is, when you think of anybody who's been in college and took a summer course, it's extensive, and the kids are doing really, really well. And when you think of what grade these kids are, these are eighth and ninth graders. These are eighth and ninth graders. So I'm really excited about that. That's what I have for enrollment. Do you guys have any questions about the enrollment piece?
Any questions?
On the summer school down under by geometry, what is E S Y?
Oh, E S Y is Extended School Year. For students who are in special education on their IEP, it's part of their school learning. And so what you do is you analyze, would a kid, would a student, and this is typically your students that are enrolled in your D-level or life skills classes, would a student have an over amount of regression if they weren't in school for this amount of time? So there are three students in that class. All three of those students use a communication device. And so these are, these are your more, students who need more intensive support. No problem. Any other questions about enrollment? The last thing I have for you is I'm gonna, you guys got an annual health report from Ms. Mandron. She went ahead and put that together, and she's enjoying a vacation somewhere. So in honor of her vacation, as well as when we started the year, sorry, I don't know why I'm sharing and not presenting. When we started the year, we started with water. You know, water's really empowering and refreshing, and so Mr. Hawkins and I, when we presented to the entire staff, we started with water. I thought it was only appropriate that we end with water. Not only, we started with waves, you know, things come in waves. Now I feel like we're surfing those waves. You know, we've come a long way in a short time. Due to kind of confidentiality pieces, there's a lot of medical information that Jeanette gave you in those reports, so I'm just going to summarize it. Those, the bulk of those reports talk about staffing, personnel numbers, things like that. They talk about medical supports, student health data, medications, procedures and screenings. This is all things that the nurses have to do. It also speaks about student visits. How many students visit the nurse's office? Whether it's for magic ice or Band-Aid, or there's something serious, or, you know, they have an illness and things like that. And so all of those numbers are within your report, and so it's in there. Do you guys have any questions about that?
I guess I'll just talk to the board. This is probably not something that we usually see, but it is a required report, and so they decided that they would show us. Do we have to sign it too?
No, no. I mean, it's a little, you know, I'm a little bit different. Just asking. I'm a little bit different. But anytime we're going to present information to the state, I'd love for you guys to see it. Anytime, you know, those documents that become public information, in case you get a question, we want to make sure that although you've never seen it before, it is a required report. It's something we want to bring to you, just so you're aware. And so if you ever have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to myself, Ms. Mandron, anything like that, which is why you'll probably see additional pieces that you didn't before and why I try to keep them short, because they are additional.
Thank you. No, no, I just wanted the board to know.
Madam President, members of the board, the annual school health report is also a document that is used by the Department of Health and other entities when they're looking at trends regionally and statewide. And so when you talk about trends like in COVID or any other incidents in health, in a county or a school district at the state level, they use that data to make decisions and whether the funding, additional programming, whether they're making recommendations, whether they're reaching out to a corner of the state, seeing, "You're seeing a flare up of this. This is something that we need to tackle more." This is the type of data that they get from the schools that they use to identify those trends. And so likewise, if there's a trend in the data that tells us something as well, our director of nursing would say, "We really need to look at investing in X, Y, Z because our data is telling us that this is an issue." So for example, we have, if we, I don't even want to use that as an example because someone will hear it and go, "No, that's..." If there was an example of a trend that the data presented for us locally, we'd be able to use it, just like the state as well.
Madam President, I was going to mention the same thing. I don't think we'd ever seen that report before. And being in the healthcare world, I found it very interesting and informative, and I think it just speaks to the amount of work that our nursing staff are doing, and it's documented too. And so the, it was, it was very interesting and thorough, and as I said, it speaks to the amount of work, and it's a lot of...
It is. Those numbers, when you look at the number of visits and things like that, it was a lot. And so these, our nurses at this point are all ladies. These ladies are busy.
It's one thing to see all those kids, but then to document it all, that's the...
Yes. And that's the requirement. And the only way we could capture those numbers is with documentation, absolutely.
Thank you.
I agree one hundred percent with you. Any other questions for me? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Item five E, Board of Education, five E one, Finance Subcommittee. We met Thursday as planned, four P M. here in the board office. We reviewed the financial reports. I had a few questions, which it seems like it's always the same ones, right? But now it's a little earlier or something, something like that. We reviewed the variance report. Did I miss one? I did miss her. I'm so good at that. Michelle, you're up.
I don't have anything.
She has nothing. She gave me, she gave me the eye. You guys are so good. Okay, Michelle has nothing to record. Board of Education, Finance Subcommittee, we met. The only thing I'd like to bring to everyone's attention is something that we've learned at the law conference that we may or may not have to follow OMA, and so we're seeking further guidance on that from the attorney. And also, it sounds like he's talked to Joe Giann, so those may or may not have to follow the OMA as well as the audit committee. So it's just some stuff that we found out at the law conference that we are seeking further guidance on. Any questions for me? Patrick wasn't able to join this month, but...
And I do apologize for my absence as I was at a New Mexico County's conference in Albuquerque.
No worries.
So I applied for the K five plus planning grant. As a district, when we made the decision, we went out to staff and we went to each campus and visited and gave presentations on the K, the K five plus, the extended, extended school year grant, which is a ten additional days, the K five plus, which is additional twenty days. And we talked about it, and each campus then voted and gave their feedback back to us. And so it was a clear resounding, this isn't something that we're interested in, ready to do as a district as a whole. But there were pockets of individuals at every campus that were very much interested. And so what I chose to do was to apply for the planning grant, the planning grant, which essentially basically said, "If your district is interested in looking at this further and taking steps to consider this, we will fund whatever efforts as a district you choose to take to look at this further." And so I applied for this. The high school reached out to me, teachers at Stoudt every campus. And so we received an additional funding of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to incrementally explore the idea of extended school year or additional days for the upcoming school year. What I'll do at the beginning of the fall is visit with principals, our ESAP, which is our Elementary, Secondary and Advisory Committee, as well as those teachers who contacted me in the beginning, showing their interest, and look at ways in which we could pilot an extended school year program for students and teachers who are interested to see what this experience would look like, give teachers at every campus an opportunity who are interested to experience it. And that would occur at the end of the upcoming school year. So it's not something that would happen at the beginning of the school year. Know what had happened during this particular school year. So no one needs to worry about a change to their calendar. But as we have these conversations with our staff and our parents, for those who are interested, we would look at the potential opportunity for extending and adding additional days at the end of this school year for those students and those teachers to experience and see if this is an avenue that we would want to pursue in the future.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hawkins?
Madam President, so Mr. Hawkins was not only applied, but was awarded the grant, it sounds like.
Three hundred and eighty-seven thousand. I, I, I...
He asks, and it is granted.
I worked with Michelle, and Michelle is the stripper for details. So when she says, "That's how much the salary is, but don't forget adding twenty-six point seven percent for benefits." And so that was added for each of the positions. And so the equivalent of one individual per grade level, per campus at the elementary level could potentially participate in this, as well as our middle school and high schools having a small cadre of team, both at English and in mathematics. And so the potential is there for those who are interested. We will put the opportunity there and develop the plan for those who are interested.
Thank you.
One other thing we did talk about, which I think should be noted here, I think it's gotten pretty well, but the fact that Silver Schools is covering school supplies for every student in our district as a way just to help families. And so I'm sure that you were at the head of that, along with all of your associates to kind of push that along. And so just want to get that out there for the public. Silver Schools is buying all of the school supplies for our students, and they're coordinating it here at a purchasing level and then a distribution level with hopes that all of those supplies will be in the classroom when school gets started. So thank you, Silver Schools.
Madam President, members of the board, if you go over to the warehouse now, two days after the P O was submitted, boxes, inboxes, inboxes started showing up. Mr. Potts and his team has been incredibly generous with their space as it has been overrun by school supplies. And so they are coming in fast and furious. I think Mr. Potts said that almost every day, there is a shipment of school supplies coming in.
If we need to give up our boardroom, we'd gladly give our boardroom and meet in the lobby.
He may take us up on that. Madam President, members of the board, one thing I will say is we've been contacted by several local of our churches and individuals who had said, "You know, is there anything else we can do?" Typically, we every year provide supplies, and if you're doing this, how can we help? And so I would extend to them, at some point, as I've mentioned to them, I'll reach out to them because we will sort those supplies and get them ready for each campus and each grade level. And I will welcome those volunteers as we get those ready. So they'll be getting a call from me relatively soon.
And thank you to all those that have already volunteered. All right, Board President, I will do, no, I'm sorry, Threat Assessment Committee?
We do not meet.
Okay. Do I have a printout? I might keep in better line. It's not going well. Okay, they did not meet. So they had nothing to report either, so we're good. Board President, I'm going to start with these policy readings first. As first reading, they did come from our Policy Services. And so be sure to get in your board book and read them in their entirety prior to the next meeting where it would be a second reading and we would make a motion or make an action to adopt. First reading of Policy Advisory twenty, number two-two-two-nine slash D O, disposition of school facilities to charter schools. First reading policy number two-three-zero, G B A, equal employment. First reading of Policy Advisory two-three-one, G C I A, teacher residency. And first reading of Policy Advisory number two-three-two, G E, retiree, return to work. And so that's to get us into compliance with most of the new laws that came out during the legislative session. Board comments. Like I said, the school supplies are greatly appreciated for families during this time of ever-inflationary prices of everything. I was able to attend the law conference. Patrick and I rode up together, and then we met with Mike McMillan. And there was a ton of our admin team at there, and that was just really awesome. Maybe I've never been to a law conference before, but I don't know if that's new for central office. But I just want to talk about how wonderful, like what a wonderful team we have. It's exciting, and it's fun, and it's engaging, and it's, it's just everything that you want to, it's the type of team that you want to be involved with. And so I just feel very honored to be a part of your team. Going forward, I was talking with Patrick about possibly trying to coordinate the one that we want to go to in the year as a board so that we can all be in attendance, not only to share... as a board, um, so that we can all be in attendance, not only to share kind of what we learned. Um, I think as a district, we tried to all kind of spread out and hear the different presentations. Um, but I also thought that we could maybe even work that into being like a board retreat type situation for the rest of Saturday and into Sunday. So I would want to try to coordinate that, obviously, as early as we could. Um, just giving Michelle enough time and all of us enough time to, to coordinate that. Um, I feel like that would be a good opportunity for that. Um, congratulations to NHD. Um, has our foods already gone to nationals? They go next week. Mr. Flores?
Next week, yeah.
When will, when will you be a bachelor? Um, so I hope they have a, a great time and do really well. They always, uh, represent Silver Schools very, very well. Exciting about the summer school, um, sounds like next summer will be as well attended, if not better. Um, and so that's really exciting. Again, just thank you to our whole team. Um, from Mr. Hawkins, to Mrs., Mr. Potts, Mr. Wahaka, Alvarez, Barris, McCain. Thank you guys for, for all that you contribute in such a positive way, uh, for our district. It, it does feel very different than a year ago. Thank you so much. Mr. Khan?
So yeah, I'll maybe get Ashley's comments, you know, going to the school law conference. It, I'll, I'll say too enough where having lunch with the administrators and, and the school board, school board members and attendants, i- if you get to know the administrative team in a different manner as to just business. So I really appreciated that. Um, and, um, Mr. Hawkins just shined up there in Albuquerque. I, he, he was like can top of the waterfall, I'm lying, but everybody's just, you know, imagining what he was doing. So it's just, it, it's awesome just to see, um, our team up there and then just show the unity. And I think that's real important and it goes throughout the state. Um, I did attend the Silver Scholars Open House and Graduation. Um, at the open house, there was well attendance of parents with, with their, um, pre-K, uh, student. Um, and graduation, I, I came to two of the graduations and they were well attended. Ms., Ms. Sanchez did a great job and her team on organizing that. Um, I, I just, just to, just to see what that program does in the future, I'm so excited. And also, you know, I've gotten nothing but positive feedback towards our district for the school supplies. Um, people in my district, District One are so, uh, they can't thank our district enough for, for helping with this relief for the school supplies. It's like they, um, one family told me it's like they can breathe, they're not stressing about just getting their school supplies and having to, to clothe their, their students for the school year. So, um, there's, it seems like it took some burden off some family shoulders, so I just want to thank the district for that. And, um, I, I just, good luck to all the organizations going up to nationals and congratulations. And I just hope everybody is enjoying their summer. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. I, I would also echo the comments about, uh, being up at the law conference. I was able to attend one of the two days up there and really enjoyed it and was, um, at first surprised to see the large group from Silver, but, uh, it was, I think, a, a great event and it was great to see, uh, the majority of, of central office up there as well. And, uh, so really enjoyed that. And, uh, um, those that are, uh, enjoying their summer break, it's halfway over almost. We're almost the 4th of July. Summer schools, that means summer school's almost over too though, so. Everybody will be on break shortly and hope everybody, uh, is able to recharge and enjoy a, a little break. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Mr. Flores?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a, a minute to, our heart goes out to the victims of Uvalde. We have obviously heard about that tragedy in Texas and, um, it's just, uh, I've had a lot of feedback from, from parents and teachers, again, asking why we don't have armed security guards in our schools. And it's unfortunate, but it, it's, it will happen again pretty soon. And it's just like playing Russian roulette and schools think it's not going to happen to them. And I'm sure that's what happened with Uvalde. They never thought it would happen with them. I don't have the answer to the parents or the teachers, um, why we don't have armed security guards because that was certainly, I think, helped with the number of fatalities when in fact it does happen. I'm pleased that the schools have taken a, a step with the Threat Assessment Committee, creating a, a good safety infrastructure. We have barriers, cameras, radios, uh, the Alice. We, I think we're, we're ahead of the curve with our presentations for active shooters. And, um, it, it's unfortunate that we even have to talk about it, but it's, it's, that's today's world. And the only thing we can do is be prepared for it. I think, again, we, Americans are, uh, are very forgetful. And when that incident happens, yeah, yeah, hearts go out and within a few days, it's, it's back to business. When the news quits talking about it, it's back to business and until the next one, and the next one, and the next one. When it stops, who knows? It, it, it may never stop. But I think that's something that we need to certainly look at in the future is having an armed security guard because it's just like the insurance. Story I told you guys at several meetings ago, uh, yeah, enjoy your summer. Um, I hate to be a Debbie Downer and bring that up, but yeah, just our hearts go out to those students because it's not, my heart goes out when you see kids calling 911, asking for help and no one helps them. Mr. Hawkins, just a quick question, is the scoreboard, I mean the marquee for Silver High ever going to get fixed?
I know that they were working on it. I think Rusty at one point or someone was working on updating a piece of it. I'm going to have to follow up, Mr. Potts. We have an individual that when he calls, people tend to respond and get things accomplished pretty quick. So I'm just going to ask Mr. Alvarez to reach out to the company and see if he can add a little salt to help get that.
Yeah, it's unfortunate because every time you drive by there, it's still the same little words on top. And there's been a lot of money spent on that marquee and, um, usually the messages are very helpful, especially during the summer, when it says, hey, uh, it's time to register, register by this date, you know, freshmen this date, sophomores, yada, yada, yada. But yeah, it would certainly be nice if it worked and not just sat there, not working.
We'll follow up with that, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. All right, item number six, open public comment. Do we have any stuff? Action items, consent agenda. Mrs. McCain?
Okay, um, tonight we have a long list of items to be, um, approved by the, the board. Um, I'll, I'll start with my, um, total of checks written for the month of May in the amount of $2,789,219.54. Um, that covers the checks written in the month of May. We have, um, in our annual audit, we have to list all of our funds that, um, either existed or anything that wasn't brought to zero at some point in time. Well, over time, we've accumulated, um, quite a few, um, funds that have, you know, very, uh, small balances. They're not active funds anymore. They are not, you know, recognized as, um, they're not allowed to have activity as far as the, the Public Ed Department because they're not consistent right now. But because they had a balance, whether it was a revenue that was due to us or an amount that we had, um, initially years past been awarded and didn't spend all of it, but it has to be, they all have to be reported on our audit so that everything balances back to our, um, bank accounts. And so in, in speaking to our auditors, I've asked them, you know, how do we get rid of some of those that have just continued to, you know, be there? And they said that we have to do a permanent cash transfer, either moving the funds into the operational balance or paying it out of, which when I'm reporting to you, I'm balancing to that bank account and so those amounts are already considered in there. Okay? And so, um, I, uh, emailed y'all this weekend and I got the list all done of the, the, all the funds that are in there. I can list all of the funds if you'd like, but they're also listed on your, um, uh, agenda report. And I'm, um, what I'm asking you to do is make permanent cash transfers in the amounts that were reflected on each of those forms. I did separate ones for each fund in case the public ed has an issue with one. I don't want to negate all of them and so therefore I did them in separate entries. But it's, um, various funds that have been inactive for five or more years, some of them up to 15 years and still being reported on our, our, um, audit report. This will allow us to clear them off and kind of window down our audit report a little bit and have it only reflect active, um, funds that we're working with as far as, um, state and federal grants and any, um, state direct grants that we have. And so, um, for all of those cash transfers, we have, um, like I said, um, federal and state that I, um, seeking transferred to zero out those balances so that they don't have to be reflected on our audit anymore. We didn't have any bids and proposals. And then we had a wonderful multitude of donations this time. We had funds coming in for, um, the AZNM Properties Holdings Association, um, donated $2,000 to NHD. Um, Becca Physical Therapy and Sports Medicine, uh, donated $500 to N, NHD. Beck Family Dental, um, gave us a multitude of donations. They gave us $500 for NHD, $500 for FCC LA and $500 to the senior class. Um, Silver City Moose Lodge donated $800 to FCC LA and $2,000 to football. Silver City Rotary Foundation donated $500 to NHD. South West Bonin Joint, um, donated $800 to, um, to sponsor our scoreboard in the 2223 school year. Town of Silver City donated $4,270 to the senior banners that, um, hung downtown, um, prior to graduation. And Ernest and Karina Bias donated $500 to Lapata NHD. And so for all of these things, I ask your approval tonight.
You mentioned the bars?
Oh, the bars, thank you. Cause I had a stack of those. Usually in June, we don't have as many bars, but we're still getting awarded money right down to, I think, the day before our finance meeting. We got a notice that one of our, um, bus contractors had bought a new bus. And so therefore, because it was purchased in this fiscal year, they get all of the rental fees in a lump sum payment. Usually it's divided over their contract and the rest of it, because I, I believe it's a five or six year amortization of the, um, bus purchase. And so next year they will get, uh, one-sixth of that in, uh, as part of their bus contractor payments. But, um, we received the pre-K initiative to pay us the additional dollars. I didn't ask for approval last year, but I didn't, and last board meeting, but I did mention it, to pay that, um, 0.75% increase from the legislators. So we received $2,623.56 from them. We received an emergency fuel allocation for the bus contractors. That money is awarded to Silver Schools, but it flows directly through to our bus contractors. They get every penny of it. And so, um, they're going to receive $29,883 and that's divvied up proportionally based on their routes and mileage by our transportation, um, person.
Our word, huh? We're all just.
And then, um, on our food services, you know, when we started out the year, um, and our experience from the prior year with the pandemic going on, we didn't have an expectation of having very much revenue generated. Well, as we came out of the pandemic and we were serving lunches and Rhonda was, you know, out there working, you know, in the school cafeterias, we were able to generate, see the generation of revenue. So, um, I started out with about a $475,000 budget for the school's, um, student nutrition with the expectation that most of their salaries would be paid out of the, um, the SRT funds. And a lot of the, well, the only expenditures that we didn't put into any of their funds were for food because those are reimbursed by the USDA. And so you can't pay for them somewhere else and get that reimbursement. So food and food items and non-food items that were served in the cafeteria all still went through the cafeteria budget. But we saw an increase in the revenue and so in order to reflect that, um, on our books, I'm asking for a bar to increase the revenues by $620,000 because we didn't recollect that much more than was budgeted. During the course of paying out contracts and, and getting through this end, um, end of the fiscal year, um, some of our funds, our Title I, um, our IDEA B, our SRT funds, all needed, not so much, they didn't see an increase, but basically balancing those accounts so that all of the, um, functions are within a positive balance. And so once we got all of those things paid out, I mean, I looked at those funds and made sure that we, we'll present balances and, um, funds that will be, um, acceptable to the P- Public Ed Department and will reflect positively on us when we get our audit because nothing will be overdrawn in the functions. The funds themselves will definitely not be overdrawn, but the functions within those, um, accounts won't be, um, overdrawn. And then, of course, the final, um, bar that I've mentioned is Montoya purchased a new bus. And so she's getting her rental fees in a lump sum for this, end of this fiscal year. And then her 2223 year will be prorated along with her regular payments. And so for all of these things, I ask for your approval as well.
All right. Uh, motion, do I have a motion for Consent Agenda? 7A1A, A1A1, A1B, A1C, and A1E.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Flores. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. I have two questions. All of these permanent cash transfers, I, I went through all of them. You're just moving them from one fund into operational. They're all going into operational, is that right?
Or, yeah, or coming out of it. If they had a negative balance, then that money would be, it's been reflected on a regular monthly reconciliation.
Perfect. And then I have one other, but it's gone. Um, yeah, that's it.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. McMillan?
Just like to point out that Mrs. McCain has the world record now for attachments in the board book.
Okay. Truly noted.
It was previous, it was previously held by Policy Services Advisory. By the looks of it, she's going to hold that record for quite some time.
Most definitely. Um, the other thing I wanted to just mention really quickly that I missed on finance, we did talk about SRT Funds, ART Funds, CARES Act funding. And so just to let you guys know, we're through the first, almost through the first.
We wrote the last, check last week, so we've spent all of our CARES Act, all 810,000 that was allotted. We have spent every penny of it and are moving through the SRT Funds because they have the next, um, expiration date.
Right.
And then from there we'll use the ART Funds which have the final expiration date and we will make sure to try to use all of those.
Perfect. I just wanted the board to be aware.
Madam President, members of the board, so you'll notice that from the school supplies, for example, we're using our SRT Funds, uh, for that, similar to what we did with our staff supplies. And so when we discussed that, you guys approved that that was part of that conversation. It was a while ago. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I kind of reflected that.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you to all of our donations, all of the people that have donated. Um, your money was well spent. Some went to DC already and some are headed for San Diego and senior class had some awesome end of the year events. So thank you to all of our sponsors' donations. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. All right. Okay, so we are going to consideration and approval of Consent Agenda items. That might be a little bit, because are you presenting for us, Mr. Wahaka, or are we just voting?
I hope so.
You're on here. You are on here. So it should be, we should move to see Transportation, Mr. Victor Wahaka. You made it.
Thank you, Madam President. School board members, Silver Schools, School Board members. Uh, Superintendent Hawkins, Mrs. Lucero, Mrs. McCain, social superintendents Barris and Alvarez and Mr. Potts in the back. Thank you. Uh, happy Juneteenth and happy Father's Day to our fathers in attendance and sharing this evening with us, um, virtually. Um, I do have three items, uh, that I asked the board to review. Uh, the first, uh, also I need, uh, signatures of approval as well. So the first one is our NMDOT Local Government Road Fund Proposal. And again, that's just, uh, to continue the process of, for next year's award that we discussed a couple of months ago. Moving forward to continue the entryway in the. moving forward to continue the entryway in the parking lot at Harrison Smith Elementary. The second one is, Ms. McCain had already mentioned, as far as we have some contracts that we need to review and approve. The first, it depends on which side of the folder that you open up to. Yes, we have next year's budgeted contracts for our four contractors, Cliff School, Shelley Farms, not Cliff School, but Cliff, Shelley Farms, Mangus, as well as Multitod Construction. And as Ms. McCain also shared, N M P E D also released emergency allocations for fuel just recently. So we have those amended contracts for this fiscal school year. So we have to amend those contracts once again. And so you'll see those amended contracts to finish out this school year. And again, as Ms. McCain noted, when you look at Montoya Transportation, you're going to see an additional amount because of her recent bus purchase. So there's going to be another allocation for her rental fee to be paid before the end of this fiscal school year.
Any questions for Mr. Wajaka? Thank you. All right, now we're going to do the consideration and approval. I am concerned, did we miss one of Cindy's that needs to be approved?
It's next, it's next, the Idea B.
What about the one before it? The first one you presented?
Oh, the grants? No, that's another informational, those don't have to be approved.
Okay, good. All right, Item D, Consideration and Approval of the Idea B Application for Twenty-two, Twenty-three School Year as Presented During Our Work Session. Do I have a motion?
We moved.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, go ahead.
Are we going to vote on number C? Number C?
He's, it's down below.
It's next, down there.
The New Mexico D O T and S C S Cooperative is E, the Fleet Service is F, and G is the emergency allocations. So they're all there. Coming up next, motion by Mr. McMillan to approve Idea B application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Flores. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and Approval of the New Mexico D O T and S C S Cooperative Agreement for Twenty-two, Twenty-three Government, Local Government Road Program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Consideration and Approval of the Twenty-two, Twenty-three Fleet Service Contracts. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Flores, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item number eight, open public comment. Lisa, do we have any?
We choose G.
Did I not just say emergency fuel allocation contract? That's what I said.
Fleet Service Contracts?
We'll do it again. So did I do Fleet Service?
You just did it.
You did, you did that.
Okay. Consideration and Approval of Emergency Fuel Allocation Contracts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, signify by Mr. Khan, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. It might be in there twice, but better twice than not. Okay, we don't have any open public comment. Item nine, future meetings, proposed agenda items and announcements, if there are any. Finance Committee Meeting Will Meet July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. That may or may not be in an open meeting act, but we'll see, correct? Twenty-twenty-two Leadership Retreat, July fifteenth through the sixteenth in Taos, New Mexico. If you are planning on attending, Lisa needs to know very quickly. And our next regular school board meeting is July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. That is one Monday later than usual to accommodate some schedules. Any announcements? Any announcements? All right. Item number ten, Executive Session. The board may elect to go into Executive Session for reasons permitted under the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, see N M S A nineteen-seventy-eight subsection ten dash fifteen, H one through nine. Mr. Hawkins, do we have any reason to go into Executive Session?
At this time, I wasn't contacted.
Do you guys need to go into Executive? All right. So we will not have a report on Executive Session. I look for a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Flores, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McMillan. Patrick, will you please do a roll call?
Madam President, Ashley Montenegro?
Yes.
Vice President, Dr. Michelle Diaz? Patrick Khan? Yes. School Board Member, Mike McMillan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Eddie Flores?
Yes.
We are adjourned and it is seven forty-eight P M.